All right, I have 6:31, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on the agenda is public comment. Again, please limit your comments to just budgetary items into three minutes. And do I have anyone who wants to make public comments? All right, seeing no volunteers, we'll move on. The topic of the business tonight is to continue to approve the Department and Agency budget requests. We have with us, they had them volunteer fire department answer just a couple of questions on that we had on their budget. And when they're done, Rhonda, I will turn it over to you and Doug, whoever is on and wants to talk about your presentation, your budget request. With, and then once we get done with that, we'll go back through some of the department requests that weren't acted on either because, because they weren't quite complete. All right? All right, and moving on, Adam, Sam, we had just a couple of questions on the increases in your budget. One was the line item for personnel costs, which I was, I explained was due to the, primarily due to the number of physicals you have to perform that couldn't be done today. And I think we satisfied that question. The other question was, the small equipment line has increased a fair amount. Would you please address that for us?
Sure, yeah, you are correct in the, uh, physicals being the major increase in the admin personnel line, and that is due to the COVID and not being able to get physicals done, because a lot of doctors and stuff were closed down, and spirometry testing is, is still closed down. So that is that increase there. The increase in, um, equipment, this equipment line is basically, there's two big items in there. One is turnout gear. We were ordering six sets of turnout gear. Um, we've bumped it up, um, to 10 sets, I know, um, there. Um, we used to always order 10 sets, we cut it back at one point in time, um, to try to save some money. But we're, we're at a need at this point to keep ourselves and keep our gear, um, in, within date and within spec to, uh, to bring it back up to 10 sets. So that's, you know, uh, $3,500 a set, so that's four additional sets above what we were looking for. The, the other big increase there is in our foam line. For, um, those of you who haven't been following it, and the PFAS issues with the old foam, um, all that, we can't no longer use the old foam, so we need to purchase new foam, uh, because of the PFAS issue. So we increased our foam line. Um, it was, I don't remember exactly what it was, but that went up to $5,000 from, from $1,500, so there was a $3,500 increase there. And that's the purchase, uh, the new environmentally friendly foam that, uh, we're being, you know, uh, required to, uh, to switch to. So those are the big increases in, in our budget and why those numbers are the way they are.
Hi, Sam, can you explain to a non-firefighter what turnout gear is? Just curious.
Yeah, sure. The, uh, the gear that we wear, the, the fireman gear, the fire protective nomex gear that you see a firefighter wear is what they would call turnout gear. So it's the actual gear that us as firefighters put on to protect us from anything, you know, whether it be cars, hazmat calls fire, um, but it, it's fire rated and it, uh, it's good for, it has a shelf life of seven to 10 years. At 10 years, it's at the end of its life, so it, though, it needs to be replaced. Um, we have roughly 60 sets of gear in the department. So I mean, to replace it every 10 years, we gotta stay on top of it. Um, some of it doesn't last the full 10 years for some of the real active guys and who are doing more work. Uh, it wears out sooner than that, and for others, it does go to the 10 years, but that's, uh, that's what it is and...
So really, that's a safety thing, then? That, this is not something that like, oh, this would be nice to have. This is like, no, that we need this to keep our people safe.
Right, it's not a, it's not a nice to have, it's something we, we have to have, and it's something we really need, um, to, uh, to keep, you know, our firefighters safe and keep them up to, to date with, uh, with their gear and in regulation.
Uh, my internet, this is Sean, my internet went out a little bit there. Are you replacing all of it at once, or are you scheduling it in a few at a time, or how's that working?
We have a, uh, basically what we've been, we were doing 10 sets a year. Um, so, over the course of the time, we would cycle it out. So we had dropped it down to six a while ago, but six isn't covering us. We're at a point now where we have more that needs to be replaced, so we're, we're bumping that up to six. Um, you know, we could, next year, um, we're, we're looking at that. We may be able to bring that back down a little bit, but you know, this year, we really need 10 sets to bring us up to, up to stuff on, uh, on where we need to be.
All right, and then the admin personnel other, that's the, uh, because the physicals, you, uh, anticipate coming in under in that line this year for this fiscal year, I would imagine, since you can't do the physicals?
Right, we haven't spent any of our physical money this year. Um, there are some price increases in there as well, but the majority of it is because everybody was on another, every other year, physical scheduled pretty much. Some people are on every year, but based on age, um, now, you know, everybody, people that didn't go this past year are all gonna be due the next year, so that's gonna double that, uh, you know, basically double the line.
Oh, yeah, no problem. So that, that money there, if, if it's been allocated already, will be returned back to the general fund or it just won't be allocated to you? So that's, that's fine. I, I have no other questions left. Okay, Kate, anything else?
I do have one more question. So on, on the budget sheet we have, it says that $0 have been paid out for the incentive plan. Does that, like, just all get paid out at once at a certain time?
Right, we don't pay out the incentive plan till the end of the year, and we can see what the, uh, numbers are, um, response numbers and the number of people that are eligible for the incentive plan. We need the full year of numbers, the way that is, so that won't get paid out. Actually, probably won't be paid out till actually July, um, you know, the coming year. We get the number to Joanne right at the, basically right at the end, and that gets transferred into payroll, and then we slowly make those distributions out as we have all those numbers compiled and, uh, in for that. So that's why that's at, at this point. We did bring that down, um, from last year, I think it was 53, we brought it down to 45. Um, it's kind of a new plan for us, and the number of people who have been eligible was kind of up in the air. Originally, we did everybody, but everybody's not making it, so we brought that, you know, back down to what we think. And it may even come down again next year, depending on how many people are, are making it. We don't have enough data to get a good average of what, of what we're spending there yet.
Thank you, that's all my questions.
All right, since I have no questions to add to that, I would, at this point, call for a motion to approve the Adam Volunteer Fire Department Budget Request Line Number 200.
This is, I'll make a motion to approve, um, Adam Fire Department Line 200 and the amount requested of $245,800.
All right, motion has been made, any further discussion? Oh, I'm all set. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Scott, Sam, thank you, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I missed some of that, I don't know if you noticed, I had to change locations in the house. The, uh, the internet was not working out all that well in the office, so you're now in the dining room.
Doesn't make it all the way to the office?
Oh, welcome to the dining room. While you're there, is there anything good? Uh, we, we did have dinner tonight, Bob, so I'll take your time tonight. Oh, yeah, thanks, Sean. All right, let's move on to the, uh, ambulance budget. I noticed we have another caller on the line. Doug, would that be you by chance?
Yes, uh, Bob, that's me, Doug.
Okay. And Doug, are you near Rhonda, because I'm getting feedback here. It's the two of you are too close, or has a computer on?
Okay, I think we've got that under control.
Don't fool yourself, it's a computer, it's just lying in wait for you.
That's true.
All right, Doug, I'll turn the floor over to you. Uh, your budget lines are pretty simple, or it's one simple line, but there was quite a bit of an increase in there. Would you, uh, mind going over that for us?
Okay, um, thanks, Bob, and I apologize, we're still busy trying to, uh, address the echo here. Um, okay, so, uh, what we did for, uh, our request for 2021, '22, we had to increase our request in, uh, historically, um, Haddam Ambulance had initially been receiving about 140 to 145,000 a year from the, and that was, um, 15, 18 years ago, up to about a decade, eight years ago. And that was to help cover the cost of staffing, um, for the paid staffing to volunteers. The, um, last several years, uh, had been lowered to 125,000, uh, up until about three or four years ago. Um, and it was lower to 85,000 at that time, uh, because Haddam was, Haddam Ambulance was gonna be going into the long-range capital plan, uh, with the town of, like, $40,000 a year over a 10-year period. So, um, we agreed it made sense, okay, uh, bring down the allocation to Haddam Ambulance from 125 to 85,000. However, at the next budget, um, uh, and shortly after that, uh, we were, what we didn't know was happening was we were gonna be taken out of the long-range capital plan. And indeed, we were, but, uh, the budget allocation was never restored to the 125. So, we have been running larger deficits than we expected over the last couple of years. And so, if we bring that forward to, uh, 2020, um, 2020 hit us hard like a lot of, uh, other businesses, and, and I'll describe us as a business for the purpose of, you know, uh, running the agency and having money coming in and going out. Um, but, uh, what happened in 2020 with the COVID is, uh, money, more money had to be spent on PPE. Now, we received, uh, a lot of PPE from the, but we're still spending money on PPE for items that were still short. Uh, and those costs up considerably, uh, first because the items cost more, and second, um, because we bought them. Um, so that's one thing that happened. The, the next is our call volume, uh, dropped, uh, rather dramatically. Um, we, uh, in 2018, did, uh, 883 calls. In, uh, 2019, 875, and last year, 648. So our call volume dropped a little over 25% uh, year-over-year from, uh, 2019, uh, calendar 2019 to calendar 2020. Um, so that was the first problem, the call volume dropped. The second problem was that, um, the number of folks declining transport to the hospital once we were called increased, uh, to the point where over the summer, we were at 40% uh, non-transport for the calls we did receive. So, that leaves us, uh, with a little income problem. So, uh, the way things operate right now is, um, most, if not all of you are aware, is, um, the volunteer ambulance services in the state, um, I think all but one volunteer service in the state actually bills for service. Um, we bill at a lower rate than the commercial services, and all we're allowed to bill for is 911 calls that we respond to and actually transport. So if, if we get called, uh, to a residence or to a, an accident on the road or something, and nobody goes to the hospital, uh, then we don't bill for it, we receive no revenue for that. So the revenue generating calls decreased substantially, uh, between 2019 and 2020. So, uh, that, uh, so, so what, we had a lot lower revenue in general, and we're projecting lower revenue for, um, 2021. Now, the call volume dip didn't really start happening till around March. Um, the revenue, uh, dip, uh, follows that, uh, by one to three months, because you had the processing for the billing and everything, and then time to get it back in, in the books. So at the beginning of the year, we were still seeing income, uh, as if we were handling calls at a rate that we did in 2019, even though that volume was less. So now, in the first part of 2021, we're seeing revenue from the calls that we did in the last quarter of 2020, where the volume, uh, is pretty much at its lowest, uh, for transport volume. So that is, uh, our biggest problem on the revenue side. The decreased call volume, uh, decreased transport volume, and subsequent decreased revenue, plus the lower amount that we received with the town, um, historically, uh, as compared to historically. The other problem is, um, staffing. Uh, we had a goal, um, in 2022 to reduce our staffing costs, and we did. In 2019, we spent $361,665 on staffing expense, uh, through the contract, agency that we contract with, uh, Emergency Resource Management, uh, or ERM. That's a significant amount of money. Um, our goal for 2020 was to get that down to 330,000, and we were gonna just work on getting more volunteers and incrementally decreasing that amount. Um, we took, um, a few steps in, uh, 2020 to get the, uh, staffing hours down, the paid staffing hours down. And, uh, we actually exceeded our goal, or, um, uh, we got our ERM expense down to $283,681. So, um, we saved, uh, nearly $80,000, about $78,000, um, in, in, so, uh, we were very happy with that. Um, the problem was, though we did reduce that expense, the revenue, as I mentioned, took a big hit. Um, so for, we have, um, a, an expense issue with staffing in that even if we maintain, uh, the current staffing level with ERM, uh, the cost is gonna go up, um, because of the new contract and the increase, um, in the hourly rate, and in the fact that we're using a, you know, what they call a local leader or an operations manager from the ERM side of things, uh, at Haddam Ambulance. And that brings, um, our projected costs for 2021 to 320,000, um, which is still lower than, uh, what we spent in 2019, but it'll be significantly more, uh, almost $40,000 more than what we spent in 2020. So we're, so we're looking at decreased revenue and increased expenses, um, that are going to, uh, impact the, ultimately, the amount that we asked for from the town. Now, for 2020, uh, we did receive $85,000 from the town, and, and we're really thankful for the town to, for, um, giving that money to Haddam Ambulance for our operations. Um, and with that, we had a, a net, um, loss of 125,219 for the year, which we made up with, uh, we made up for, uh, out of our, uh, savings accounts. Um, and so those are, we're depleting those pretty well. What we project for 2021, let me just pull that up here. Um, so we're projecting total expenses for 2021 to actually be lower than they were in 20, uh, 20 and 2019, actually, more than 2020, but less than 2019. So, uh, we're projecting total expenses, uh, for this, uh, calendar year, 2021, at $489,250. Um, and we're projecting income, now, we're, and admittedly, we're figuring a little low at 200,000, uh, for income, uh, or actually, 230,350 for income. Uh, that reflects a decrease in service payments from 262,000, um, in 2020, and we're estimating on the low side right now, so we can be conservative about it, to 20,000, 200,000. And the reason we're doing that is because we're still seeing low call volumes, low transport volumes, and, uh, we still have that lag in payments of one to three months. So again, uh, 2020's revenue was, uh, was up more than it might have been because of the first few months of the year, uh, the call volume remained at 2019 levels. Yeah, but, and our revenue continued well into the, at 2019. Right now, our revenues are, uh, at the low end, as they have been for the second half of 2020. Um, if our call volumes and transport volumes, uh, actually pick up, our revenue, uh, projection would be higher. So, with a $258,000, uh, negative balance projected for 2021, um, if we were to receive, um, the $85,000 that has been typical for the last few years from the town of Haddam, um, we would still run a deficit of 173,900. If we go up to 125,000, which was typical, um, before a few years ago, uh, we'd still be looking at $133,000 deficit, 133,900. And, uh, we asked for 170, which would put us at $88,900 deficit. So that's, that's the, uh, the big number breakdown for what's going on. Um, we are continuing to look at ways to reduce the cost of staffing for Haddam Ambulance, and our executive board is actually gonna be meeting on that soon, um, to discuss some things that Rhonda and I are working on. Um, and in the meantime, we're applying for a PPP loan. We did not apply for a PPP loan last year, uh, because we had, we only had two employees of our own, and that, one was, uh, our treasurer, and the other is the person who, uh, preps our charts, uh, for the billing side of things, and then forwards them to our billing agent. And so, that's a relatively low cost. So we didn't apply for a PPP loan, but this year, we're, we're applying for a $100,000 loan, uh, for the PPP. Um, and we're gonna use that to hopefully offset this loss. Now, the reason, again, that we didn't apply last year is because we didn't, besides those two employees, we didn't have any of the, uh, paid staff on our payroll. Uh, they're all contracted, again, through ERM, so we couldn't apply, uh, the money from a PPP loan towards that expense. They actually have to be, uh, people have to be our own employees that are getting that paycheck. So, uh, again, we're gonna apply for $100,000, and then we're going to, in the meantime, I should say, we're gonna be looking at ways to decrease the cost of staffing, um, by bringing some of the cost of that to actual Haddam Ambulance rather than to ERM. Um, and we hope that will actually lower the cost of staffing and qualify for the PPP loan. If we do that, um, then we'll be at, um, roughly $158,000 deficit minus the, um, savings maybe that we would see, uh, in the way we employ people. And that could bring our, uh, deficit down to 150 or, or even less, 140. And then that's what we're hoping to see. What we're gonna need beyond that is a rebound in the call volume. Um, and this is the troubling thing about the way ambulance services are funded. We actually have to hope that we have more calls so that we can staff for readiness. But hoping for more calls means we're hoping that we see sick people or hurt people, um, which is not what we wanna do, we wanna see them healthy. But we're funded primarily through revenue from transports, um, which, uh, really is sick or hurt people. The other thing that's gonna impact this in the future, uh, is that Medicare is gonna be tightening up their, um, requirements for the types of calls that will be covered and how they're charted. So that could be a thing that impacts revenue, uh, in the future. And it could impact us in a big way, because currently, in fact, for the last several years, 67% plus of our, uh, patient volume are Medicare and Medicaid patients. Medicare pays about half of what our actual bill is, um, a little bit less than half, actually, and Medicaid pays even less than that. So if you took, uh, the volume of calls that we had, um, last year, uh, 648 calls, you couldn't just multiply that times our base rate and say, wow, Haddam Ambulance should be doing pretty great here. You actually have to cut that number down to only the transport volume, and then you have to take 67% of that and multiply it by the Medicaid rate. Um, and then you would start to see why we, and every volunteer service runs deficits. I think that, that's more or less what I have to present, uh, to you, but I, we're happy to answer any questions.
Can I say something?
And Rhonda wants to, um, say something right, right now. I'm gonna turn mine on mute.
Turn my mute off, okay. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, hi, this is Rhonda, um, I just wanna make two remarks, um, about, uh, we, we have about meetings, uh, with Valley Shore, and we haven't been having them for close to a year and started having them last month. And at that meeting, they spoke of many, um, ambulance, um, services are in hardship because of the same reason, you know, that Doug was talking about. Um, also, I've been in touch with, or Doug and I have been in touch with three other services in particular, and talked to them about, um, um, ways that they are staffing to, you know, to increase their staffing, but cheaper than what we're, um, doing now. So, we're working on it. And, and that's what I, that's what I want you to know. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I will, yeah, we got you, Rhonda. I, I will say, I was talking to the chief of the East Hampton Ambulance Service last week, and they're seeing much the same issues that you are, not surprisingly. Uh, Doug, I had a couple of things I wanted to ask you about. Uh, one, just because I didn't get into my notes, as you were talking quickly enough. Uh, what were your staffing costs in 2019?
Okay, let me see if I have that with me. Staffing costs in 2019?
I think you said it was like 360,000 or somewhere in that range, and I just didn't get it down quick enough.
Oh, yeah, um, just looking for my comparison chart here. It was, um, yeah, 361,665.
Okay. And I'm a little confused on the PPP. I, from my understanding, it was what you, basically what you said, at least initially, it had to be employees. So tell me again how you're gonna qualify for the, and hopefully get the 100,000 this year?
Okay, yeah. So, what our plan is, and, and we didn't wanna, um, I, I was, I guess I was kind of skirting around it a little bit because, uh, I wanna be careful, because it is a public meeting, and, uh, uh, but anyway, what, what we're thinking of doing is, uh, proposing to our board that we start hiring staff ourselves rather than contracting, but that we do that in a, in a more or less stepwise fashion, where we're just not gonna do it all at once. Um, but we'll hire a few people. Uh, that would save us roughly 25%. That would save us roughly 25% hourly for the folks that we do that with. So initially, we would hire people and put them on shifts that are currently staffed by ERM staff. But we know that there's a certain amount of attrition with ERM. And so no one would be displaced right away. It's just that they're leaving and we're going to replace them with our own staff. That's the plan. That's the main plan that Rhonda and I have right now for lowering the cost. But those folks, if they're hired by us, that would qualify as an expense that we could use the PPP loan for. The ERM staffing, because they're a contract agency and those EMTs are not our employees, even though we're paying a significant hourly amount for those folks, that expense does not qualify for an appropriate expense under the PPP loans.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Sean, Kate, questions?
This is, this is Sean. Hi, Doug, how are you?
I'm fine, Sean. How you doing?
Excellent. I was just looking at your numbers of how much money you're going to have to go into your savings. So and I've asked this to almost everybody yesterday. How is your, your, your endowment, your savings? I mean, is it, I mean, solid numbers? And can you absorb somewhat of a hit?
So we have run deficits every single month since February. And so we've been hitting that savings account pretty hard. We're down to between 100 and 125,000 in savings. Now, I know that even that sounds like a big number, even though Hattam Ambulance said more in savings before. But these, that amount of money, we wanted to keep in savings for capital expenses like a, like a new roof for the building or if something catastrophic happens to an ambulance and we have to replace it, that sort of thing. So we never wanted to get us down to a critically low number, say, well, something below 100,000. Just, you know, we need to have a certain amount on hand. But you know, the budget, what I didn't mention is that the current budget proposal that our board put together includes $0 for future ambulance replacement costs. We did everything we can to get the cost down. We're trying to get the cost down as close to the revenue projection as possible. So yeah, so we're at between 100 and 125 right now. We wouldn't want to go too much lower than that. And that's why we're, we're continuing to look for ways to save money.
Okay, and all right, so I'm going to, I'm going to assume that you guys have some investments out there also because with that, you know, amount of savings, you can't even cover your deficit. So I'm going to assume that there's some, some sort of investments there backing you. Because you said you're projecting 133,000, maybe I misheard you, deficit next year.
Let me pull that page up again real quick today, switch pages. So, well, so first, we don't have any other investments in that. Yeah, and second, our projected deficit is 258,900. We're projecting 489,000 in expenses and 230,000 in income. I think the income could go up, but it really does depend on call volume and transport volume specifically.
So basically, between your savings and your deficit, you're running on a pretty thin margin now.
Absolutely. That's why we, Rhonda and I have been doing our research. And we've been introducing this to the board as an idea for a while now. Get everybody used to the fact that we're going to be moving in it to a different model here.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Doug. I don't think we've ever met. This is Kate. I, kind of a follow up to Sean and maybe just a point of clarification. So when you say like you're running at a deficit from month to month, what does that look like? Does that just mean that you're dipping into your savings to pay bills? Or like, does it mean bills aren't getting paid, people aren't getting paid? Can you clarify what you mean when you say running at a deficit?
Yeah, it just means that we're dipping into savings every month. We, we have not put off any vendor. We, we pay our bills on time. We don't want to get to the point where there's that kind of an issue, and we're not going to allow it to get to that point. We'll find a way to work this out one way or another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, this is Bob. First of all, I would suggest for your presentation, not your presentation, but as your information moves forward, your request to the Board of Finance, you include some of this information as backup data that can go forward with it. It's, one, it's impactful, but secondly, it makes it very obvious why you're out, why you're asking us to basically double the town contribution to you. So the backup is good. And forgive me if you've already sent it and it's in our shared drive folder, but right now, my internet is being rocky and I can't get to the whole shared drive. I've just got the summary budget to deal with.
Right, thanks, Bob. I actually had not included that yet. Some of the numbers were just updated recently, but actually, I had a problem with my computer too. But I have the now, and I can leave it with your office. I'll just compile it and leave a couple of copies with you guys.
Okay, yeah, or you can just email it to me or to Joanne, and we'll, we'll make sure it goes forward with the the package to, to Board of Finance gets it.
Okay, so I'd also like to, you were correct, I'd like to explain something because you're correct. We basically double the amount the town would support us for the coming fiscal year. But that's double what we've received the last few years. Historically, wouldn't have been double. But like I said, the town started out giving about 145,000 a year, lowered it several years ago to 125, and then about three or four years ago lowered it, I think three years ago lowered it to 85. But when it was lowered to 85, the 40,000 that it was lowered was supposed to go into long range capital plan, but then, as I mentioned, we're taken out of that. So my point being, if the county continued funding the ambulance at the rates that they were 15 years ago, 10 years ago, at 145 or so, and even if you came up a little bit each year for inflation, 170 really isn't out of the ballpark for what we would have been getting. And even right now, if we had received 125 the last few years instead of 85,000, obviously, we'd be in a little bit better position right now. As it turns out, 2019 was a rough year for us also. And our savings were depleted because we were taken out of long range capital plan and our, but and our allocation had been dropped from the town. And with all that, we still had to buy two ambulances. And we worked pretty hard to keep those costs down to within reason. But we, we ended up spending quite a bit of money in 2019, which really hit our savings hard. And then you combine that with the COVID hit for 2020. And that's, that's where we are right now. And as you mentioned, ambulances all over the place are having this problem.
This is Sean. I just want to expand on what Bob said. I did pull up the, the backing information he gave. You hit, and you, basically, it was a bullet point of, okay, these expenses went up. But it was what Bob said, really expand on, on each one of those bullet points for the Board of Finance. Because, you know, your presentation here really, you know, showed us why each one of these three points increased. You know, what, what causes increase? So if you expand on that, it'd be a little bit easier to, to ask, make that ask for the Board of Finance.
Okay, thank you. Take all your points, and we'll definitely include that info. I'll expand on it the best I can.
And this is Kate. If I may, just ask more of an operational question because unlike my comrades on the Board of Selectmen, I do not have an emergency services background. So I was under the impression that the ambulance kind of operated similar to the fire department, where it was more of like an on-call, like a volunteer on-call situation. And it kind of sounds like that's not how it works. Can you, like, in a nutshell, explain how the operations of, you know, like your staff and like your day-to-day operations work?
Yes. So there are some similarities and definite differences. So the similarity is we staff for readiness. That's one similarity. Another is we try to do it with volunteers. And then another similarity is that our volunteer numbers are down, just like the fire departments. Everyone's is down. Now, how do we manage our shifts and our calls? Well, we have to have two people on any ambulance. That's what we have to have for that ambulance to respond to a call. So we schedule the month in advance for our volunteers. And just, and then we'll call them and see what they can give us. When, after they've given us their availability, we'll find our holes and see if someone is available for any others. But then we submit that to ERM, the agency that we contract with, and they'll fill the shifts that they can for us. So when the ERM staff are here, when they're on the schedule, they, we have one or two people from ERM here, depending on what we need for the shift. Our volunteers, some of our volunteers respond, stay at the building and respond to calls. Some stay at home. And when the tone goes out, respond to the building and get the ambulance out. And if there's a driver already here, they may respond to the scene, and the ambulance would meet them at the scene. And that can help us keep our response times down. But because of our low volume, a lot of volunteers won't necessarily come to the building all the time to stand by and wait for calls. We're currently averaging just over a call a day, less than, less than two, less than a call per shift. So a volunteer might do two shifts a week, maybe, at night, and they might go three or four weeks without a call. And maybe they don't want to spend all that time sitting at the building and just respond from home. So that's kind of the model we have, and a lot of small services like ours run like that, where the volunteers will respond from home, go to the building, handle the call, come back, finish their chart, and submit their chart. So that's how, how we run right now.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions or comments?
Can I make a statement here? This is for Kate specifically, but any of the Board of Selectmen. If you ever want to meet with Rhonda and I to discuss it further on operations or the financial side or any, anything about how Hattam Ambulance operates, we're really willing to discuss this at any time with anyone. Rhonda and I, we don't hold anything back. We don't consider anything that we're doing to be of a nature that we don't want to spare it. The thing we're not doing right now is just letting out to the world that we're, that Rhonda and I want to have a start employing staff ourselves rather than just the but I mean, I already said that. So, so it's out, but I mean, that, that, I was a little bit, you know, I kind of beat around the bush a little bit about that we're, we're looking for ways to save money on staffing. But yeah, if you guys want to meet with us anytime or talk to us on the phone, we're more than willing to give you any information you want.
This is Sean. I will say just for, Bobby, finally, it's for Kate. Going back a few years, when I was on Board of Finance back then, the ambulance did have a, have a substantial savings at that point. And we had asked them to use a little bit more of their savings. And I was shocked at where you were now compared to where you were then. So obviously, you did take and you cooperated very much and took it to heart and really did work well with the town over those years to, to, you know, take care of some of the, a lot of the costs. So just, you know, Kate, that they have, the cooperation has been amazing over the years. Especially since Doug's been there and really worked well with us.
Yeah, this was definitely a great explanation. It's very comprehensive and it's nice to hear the numbers. I know the numbers aren't the numbers that we want to be hearing, but it was, it makes a lot more sense now.
Trust me, the numbers aren't what we want to see, but we are going to work on closing the gap there. But again, we, I really hesitated to put that figure in that we asked for from the town. But we need to do that now, and we're going to look for savings. And if we save money, then you'll see the result next year, hopefully.
All right, Sean, Kate, anything further?
Actually, one quick question for Doug. We talked about a regional plan. Anything more going on that, or has that stalled out a little bit?
Thank you for asking that question. And you know what? Rhonda and I still want to pursue that, but it has fizzled. There's just not a lot of interest in the area for that right now. Even though everyone's having the same problem, they're all in the same boat. Services just aren't ready to consolidate. It's what we would like to see, though, and we'll continue to look for an opportunity. But it really would be with one of our neighboring services, most likely Killingsworth or Chester, because we share good border and roads with both towns. But right now, there's not an interest to do that from the other agencies.
The only, the one town that does, did seem to be somewhat on board with us was East Hattam. And divided by the river and the bridge, you know, I don't know. It may be a problem. I'm not even know.
I think there's a logistical problem with that, and it's unfortunate that Chester and Killingsworth aren't more on board because I think we could realize some, some, all towns could realize some good savings if we would just consolidate a little bit.
Yeah, well, we've asked, you know, we've met with Chester and we've met with Killingsworth. And, and quite honestly, they just did not, they were, they were forthcoming. They just said they weren't interested.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll add, this, this probably will come as no surprise, but it's pretty much every organization has seen or try, just trying to keep their heads above water with the pandemic and all. And even thoughts between the first selectmen talks between us about regionalization is ground to a halt with everything else going on. But it is something to, ultimately, we're going to have to be there. I'm absolutely convinced.
Yeah, I, I agree with Bob that that's where we ultimately need to go. And we've looked at this before. There are ways that any two of those towns could put their services together and really save a lot of money. And you bring a third town on, and it would just stop you more. And the staffing wouldn't have to increase a whole lot because the three have relatively low call volume. And the staffing wouldn't have to increase a whole lot because the three have relatively low call volume.
Yep. All right, Kate, Sean, anything else? Sean, you're live, I see.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. All right, in that case, one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the ambulance service budget as proposed for department total of 178,346.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Just for clarity, I'll make note that that, there are actually two sub-lines under 425 Hattam Ambulance Service. 170,000 is our contribution to the, the town's contribution to the ambulance corps. The other 8,346, to get the totals Sean mentioned, is just our annual charge for Middlesex. And that is a firm number for this year, the 8346. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving line 425 Hattam Ambulance Service? 178,346 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, motion carries unanimously. Doug, Rhonda, thank you for your time and your explanations here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Doug, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if you will give me a minute to go back through my budget here. There, there were a few department budgets that were either not complete or we had a couple of questions on, needed a little more work. The first one I'd like to go to is line number 090 Central Services. The item that was outstanding on those one until recently was the payroll processing cost. Still don't have a firm commitment, but the payroll company believes the processing cost will be the same this year as it was this coming year, as it is the current year. So that nut figure, $8,275, has been added to it. The rest of the costs, excuse me, just a minute. Actually, the entire line remains the same as current year budget. Kate, Sean, questions, discussion?
Wait, I might have misheard.
Okay.
Did you say the, this year's request is the same as last year's approved budget?
That's correct.
That's not what I'm seeing in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Well, the payroll.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. I missed it. It's actually a $2,000 decrease.
Okay.
Because we cut the legal, we reduced the legal notices cost because being able to do it now that Hattam now is back, Hattam-Killingworth now is back to publishing. We can publish with them at a much lower rate than we have been. So the costs are down. And honestly, I've got my fingers crossed that the legislature will finally allow us to do it online posting to meet our legal requirements. Other comments, questions?
Reduction's good.
Okay, I'll call for a motion on line 090 Central Services.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve 090 in the amount requested of 133,581.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, the next one that we didn't approve, 095 Insurance Benefits. I'm going to recommend we still hold off on this. I, there are three numbers on there you can see highlighted that are estimates. I suspect this will have to go to the Board of Finance and possibly even through most of their deliberations with the estimate for the healthcare cost, Cigna Health. That tends to come late in the budget development cycle. However, the two other numbers that are highlighted, the Employee Pension Plan and the Fire Department Pension Plan. I'm hoping I may have numbers for those tomorrow or, yeah, tomorrow or early next week. So I propose we just leave this as it is and move on. We can send to the Board of Finance what we've completed and they can start on that.
Can I ask about the cyber insurance line and what that would cover?
Yeah, basically, it's the hacking costs. Right now, KERMA, under our regular liability policy and the coverage we get from them, cyber is included because they're able to get pooled rates and make that work. Going forward, the company that provides the pool rate, that basically reinsures us through KERMA, is no longer going to do that. Rather than being insured as a pool, we have to get our own individual policies. We can do that through KERMA, but that is the quote for what one year's cost would be. That covers us up to a million dollars in damages from hacks. And KERMA is saying they're, the claims they're seeing haven't yet exceeded 200,000, but they, quite a few of them, they're in the 100 to 200,000 dollar range. It's not unusual. All right, any other questions, comments on this?
I'm all set.
Okay. The next one, as we go down, we approve the Hattam Volunteer Budget tonight. The Police Budget, I am still waiting for costs, at least a decent estimate on state police. Again, it's something, at the moment, I've got our senior resident, Truba, thought he could track down something for me so I can come up with a better, perhaps, estimate than what's in there now. Again, I suggest we leave this one and hopefully within a week, we'll have numbers in there. All right, another one unapproved is we're still waiting for Dispatch Valley Shore for those costs. But if we move down to line number 400, Social and Senior Services, that is now ready for presentation. Major increase in that, and we started this last year. We agreed that our Social Services, Senior Services Director was underpaid compared to comparable towns in the area. However, it was down to, it was, she was underpaid to the point that doing, bumping her in a year just did not seem like the right thing to do. So this is, she, this continues bringing her up. And this proposed increase here in her salary, which is split between those first two lines, Senior Service Director and Municipal Agent, reflects the final amount in the, in the raises we talked about last year. Other than that, in this budget, there's been some tweaks and some reductions. Eliminated the budget for the substitute driver. As you can see, going back for a couple of years, this year, last year, nothing's been expended. And if there's enough money in the, just the van driver wages that if we need to substitute, that money can come out of there as well. You know, the change that was made, if you look at the Meals for the Elderly, that was reduced. It's not intended to reduce any of the services we will provide. But if you look at the actual expenditure line, even the number we reduced it to 1,000 is more than enough to cover the cost. Any comments, questions on this budget?
Can you remind me what the, what cover, what falls under the Assistance Seasonal Salary? And I'm assuming there were more because it looks like they've already expend, they'll, they will be expending the approved budget from last year. So I'm assuming the increase is because they anticipate the same level of need for next year.
Yeah, that's correct. We've, a good amount of that increase has been driven by the pandemic. For example, right now, the seasonal health, it's not really seasonal, it's part-time. On, on the as-needed basis, is helping with getting the seniors registered for their vaccinations. They've been involved in more direct contact with the seniors, again, because of COVID, wellness checks, that sort of thing. Plus, just during the year, there's some, at times, there's a need for increased staffing to help with paperwork filing. Some cleanliness and stocking items in the Social Services building. And, and that's what that budget is intended to cover.
Now, the payroll increase, that completes what we had talked about, yeah, last year, correct? We didn't, we decided to spread over two years, not three, correct?
That's correct, Sean.
And this will be satisfactory because I, from everything I hear, Jessica does an outstanding job and would like to keep her here. So is, is she amenable to this? Is this, will this, will this keep her with us?
Well, I've got to start by saying describing the work Jessica does as an outstanding job is vastly overrating the impact she's having, particularly with the pandemic. She is stellar, and yes, I've discussed this with her and it is completely satisfactory to her. All right, any other comments or questions on the Social Services, Senior Services Budget Line?
No, I'm good.
Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to approve that?
This is Sean. I'll make a motion that we approve Social Services Line in the amount of 140,196.
All right, motion is on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, ambulance we dealt with. One I missed going over in my review here, if we could go back to Public Buildings, line 310. Chris talked about this Tuesday. There are two things that he didn't have. HES operating costs, he has since met with Bill and I've talked with each of them individually. It looks like the 70,000 that we budgeted this year would be appropriate. So that amount has just been moved forward unchanged. The other thing I want to draw attention to because it's something I've added today, as a matter of fact. I'm not sure this is the best line to put it in, but I couldn't find a better match. The flags that are put up through the summer and through until after, excuse me, Veterans Day. Initially, they were all purchased and maintained by volunteers. There is still some funding for replacement flags and brackets and such. But we had a number of complaints, and rightly so this year, about the maintenance of those displays. We don't have the volunteers to do that right now. The town paid, it costs us, I think, $800 to get them put up, another 800 to get them taken down. But no money really for the maintenance of it. I've put a line item in here to cover at least partially the costs of putting up, taking down, and then some maintenance during the months that they're up in here, $3,500. All right, comments, questions?
Yeah, so that should pretty much take care of public buildings, correct?
That's correct. Like I said, everything else Chris talked about Tuesday night.
I will say for the, the flags for Hattam, Bob, I'm glad to see you, a dedicated line item. If we could appoint a single, like a single point of contact for when people do see something that needs to get fixed. You know, they're very nice to have, but I will say they, they did get a little too tattered at some points. And even I was unclear on who to contact. So if we could just maybe put it on the website and just make sure it's very clear who somebody should contact if they see something that needs to get done.
Okay, good point, Kate. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, can I have a motion to approve line number 310 Public Buildings? In the requested amount, 414,867.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve line 310 Public Buildings in the requested amount of 414,867.
All right, motion is on the table. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, the last one we have is we have gotten the Hattam Parks and Park and Recreation Budget, line number 503. That budget actually reflects a decrease from, from $45,000 current year to 44,100 going forward. Any discussion on this budget request?
As I said before, reduction to get them.
Yes, indeed they are. It's nice to see them. Kate, anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'd entertain a motion to approve line 503 Hattam Park and Rec Commission in the amount of 44,100.
This is Sean. I will make a motion to approve the Hattam Rec Commission for 44,100.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. And that is the last item I have on my list.
Bob, what about that planning and zoning one?
Hi, Ray.
Tell about the planning and zoning.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. If you look at 070 Planning and Zoning. They had, initially, the request was for $500 for conferences, if I can ever get there.
Huge reaction.
Yeah, so I talked to Bill, why the 500. It wasn't that they had specific conferences or anything in mind. It was just what they thought. they thought they would put in for and after talking, we've agreed to keep it two hundred, which is what's in the current year budget. And again, nothing's been spent on it this year, but obviously it's been greatly impacted by pandemic and travel restrictions. Any questions on that budget request?
No. All right, this is Sean. I'll make a motion that we approve the planning and zoning for two hundred dollars.
All right, thanks, Sean. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Planning and zoning is approved. All right, any other comments, questions, concerns on the budget request?
Can I ask a, a general process comment?
Sure.
Um, so, um, so for this year, for this year's budget, at, at the end of the fiscal year, we reconcile any line items or outstanding balances and, you know, move money around wherever we need it to. And then any leftover money goes into the general fund?
Yeah, the money, eventually, the money that is unspent and budgeted and unspent. Most of it, I think, this year, and I think it's been the current practice, gets swept into capital non-allocated line. To remain, that requires a town, it's done at a town meeting. I think this year was eight hundred thousand dollars was moved.
Yeah, it was, it was roughly a million dollars. And that was my question when we did this. How do we have almost a million dollars unspent money? You know, and that's why we really need to take a look at this year's budget.
Right.
And so in the future, if, to take money out of that, of the non-allocated budget, what's the process for that?
All right, depending on the amount, but probably any amount we'd want to go in there for to be a town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not, I didn't spend any time on Board of Finance like you guys did and I'm trying to remember what we did last year and it seems like it was twenty-eight years ago without twenty-twenty-one.
Well, yeah, even, even having spent time on the Board of Finance, the stuff you do once a year, it's kind of hard to remember until you've been there quite a few years.
Did we, um, we didn't, did not approve EM, did we?
Ah, you're right. Talked to Kevin McManus today about that. Sean, you had a question on the equipment expenditures?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, Kevin had, we've intentionally not spent from this because of COVID again, spent from that line. We want to see how the town budget income was doing as well as have a reserve in case we needed something for equipment as driven by the pandemic. Since we're most of the way through the year and since it looked like the January tax collections were on par with what we normally get. Kevin does have some equipment. He's going to buy more toward the end of the year.
Okay.
So this year, I go in line with about what he spent last year as opposed to the five hundred you see there. So I think the five thousand moving forward is correct, is appropriate.
Okay, I just, the question was, man, we, we give them almost four thousand dollars and they've spent five hundred of it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, and so with that, we probably would entertain a motion to approve that budget. What's our other questions?
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve line two twenty Emergency Management in the requested amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars.
All right, motion is on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Emergency Management has been approved as requested. Anything else?
As I can see right now. It's approved. I think, no, other than the public safety we're waiting on. And the insurance.
Yeah. Yep, police sir costs, dispatch services costs, the insurances, and then that's pretty much it. Have capital, look at those requests will go out shortly.
Yeah.
All right, unless anyone has any final comments, Kate, Sean, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I lost track of his turn, so I'll make it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm hungry, so I don't care who makes it. Motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, everyone. Thank you for coming. For those who survived in the audience, thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting. Have a good evening, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Enjoy your day off on Monday.